I've got to press a lot of buttons.
I'd like to call before the special meeting of the Avalon City Council, September 17. Long call.
Councilmember Cassidy?
Here.
Councilmember Hernandez?
Here.
Councilmember Sampson?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Olson?
Here.
And Mayor Marshall?
Here. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Thank you. My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Members of the public may address the city council at this time. No action will be taken on non-agenda items at this meeting. Speakers should limit comments to three minutes each. Is there a public comment? I do have a question. Since the conversation will just now get going, if there's comment later on, they still may come up.
Absolutely.
Okay. All righty. Perfect. All righty.
So we have no consent calendar. This is a discussion and direction on imposing a possible moratorium on the issuance of vehicle permits, and this item is before us this evening because of the request of Councilmember Olson for consideration.
And let me just go through this. You have two staff reports which are pretty much identical, two ordinances, and the rule with a moratorium is that it goes into effect when the ordinance is in effect. And so you have, for an urgency ordinance, for it to go into effect upon adoption, you need four votes. Otherwise, if you have three votes, then we have a backup ordinance which would be read tonight and introduced, then at the next meeting it would be adopted, and then it goes into effect 30 days after the adoption. So in essence, it's, because we have an extra week, that ordinance, if you passed it tonight on a non-urgency basis, would go into effect in about 52 days. And so one of the issues that I raised in the staff report was, is that if you have that lag period of time of 52 days, plus or minus, and you people know that there's going to be an inability to temporarily get permits, there may be a rush into City Hall to get vehicle permits during the time that the ordinance has been passed but is not effective. So that's why you have two ordinances in front of you tonight. And so if it were the council's pleasure to adopt the urgency, I would still say you adopt the other one in case there would be ever any challenge that it really wasn't urgent, it was just important. And so it gives kind of, it gives you a backup ordinance in case it's challenged on the basis of urgency. Other than that, the staff report sets out the city's concerns about the number of vehicles and the negative impact that they're having, and the moratorium would prohibit the issuance of all vehicle permits, commercial and non-commercial. And yes, we've taken language from the municipal code for those permits that we issue and put it into the ordinance. The exceptions would be for a renewal of a permit where it doesn't result in an increase. If someone has a temporary permit and they're on the way to getting a permanent permit, sometimes we issue temporary permits while they have to go get the vehicle so they've got the permit. And then lastly, there's a provision for hardship, and that provision would allow someone to come before the city council and say, "I really need this vehicle because," and then they would present their case, and then the council would have the ability to grant them a permit and attach certain conditions to the granting of that permit. So this was Councilmember Olson's suggestion, so I will let him take it over.
Some of us remember back in the 70s when the city first started to control vehicles, and they did a little inventory, and they had 800 vehicles in town, and they thought that might be too many. So they passed an ordinance that they were going to control the number of vehicles, size of vehicles. We went from 800 to 1,145 days. I'm just afraid that we'll have the same situation now because I think we're going to start talking about transportation and talk about parking and talk about circulation and such, and I think when we start talking about it, there's going to be possibly some new restrictions on vehicles or some new rules and regulations, I think. I don't think we're going to afford another 400 golf carts showing up tomorrow. So that's the reason it's here. We were going to have the transportation meeting earlier, but we didn't get a chance to do it yet. There's a blank on page 3, section 9, that says this ordinance will remain in effect until repealed or blank amount of days from the adoption. To put the importance on us to get our transportation study done, so this thing doesn't go on forever. And I was thinking this would expire in 60 days, but I've heard somebody wanted it to go 90 days. I'm devoting to the amount of time. I just want us to get the transportation study done. And we've been talking about it, I mean, the other council talked about it too, but we just need to get it done so we can help alleviate, I think, some of the concerns in some of the residential neighborhoods and also downtown.
Comments from the council?
I'm told conference, and my request would be 90 days.
Did we have a study on this yet? I mean, any kind of a traffic poll? I mean, I know that we laid out a lot of signals along the streets. Was that for counting vehicles? What was that for? Was that something that Vaughn's did?
That might have been the Vaughn's traffic.
Vaughn's traffic.
That was Vaughn's, okay. So my concern is, I mean, my understanding is you have to have a permanent residence in order to have a residential autoet permit. It's also my understanding that there's 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9 different categories of vehicles that we have here. We have residential autowets, non-residential autowets, full-size residential, that's your blue stickers, interior residence, commercial autowets. It takes three hearings and one each year to get one of those. Commercial vehicles, interior, commercial, public service, and rental autowets. Public service would be like Edison Vehicles, which I've had a lot of complaints about those, parked everywhere on the streets, and they just seem to keep getting more, but the thing is they pay for the parking on those, so that's okay, I guess, to a certain point, but it's getting to be too much in that area. Rental autowets, that's a fixed number, and it's not going to get more, and I'm sure it's not going to get less either. I think the big influx we have is during the heavy summer months, we get all the people who are renting all the condos around town come out with those vehicles, and they just flood the streets. So it's kind of crazy because a lot of them think they are in Disneyland, and people are in a big hurry to get nowhere fast, or somewhere that they're just going to stop and relax fast, so it really doesn't make any sense to go anywhere fast in this town. So my major concern is a lot of the huge trap of the big trucks that we have, I mean, because right now Jordan has a good, Jordan and Dudley actually have a good idea about what we need to do for the vehicles. We have laws in place that limit people from getting new vehicles on the island unless they're, unless they fall under the qualifications, which it can be any of these nine categories. But the main thing, main two are residential autowets and full-size residentials, which you have to be a full-time resident. Then everything else, all these other seven categories, it seems to me you might be able to sneak a vehicle in here somehow. You can, there's a lot of gray area there. There's a lot of areas that we need attention to, which the study, it will probably fall under the study that there's a lot, there's a few apartment complexes and condo complexes that don't have marked parking stalls. So each apartment is not assigned to a parking stall, so it seems to me there's a gray area there where somebody can have a parking stall, but they're not necessarily living in the unit that the stall is assigned to. So there seem to be some gray areas in what we're trying to do here. Can someone explain to the audience exactly what we're trying to define here? I will give the people out in the audience, a definition of moratorium is agreed period of delay. So that's, we're asking for an agreed period, I mean, we're not asking yet, I mean, we're going to vote on this, but that's what the proposed item on the agenda is a moratorium on vehicles, agreed period of delay. And I was wondering if somebody could actually give me a definition of autowet. Is there anybody up here, maybe Dudley? I was wondering, would you happen to tell me what would fall under autowet exactly? If you don't mind, just so everybody knows.
There's a fairly long description of it, but basically an autowet, in our rules, is a vehicle that's 120 inches by 55 inches. That's the footprint.
Okay.
And there's a weight limit too. We've never really gone out and been able to weigh any of these things, so we haven't ever put that into practice. We also, in the autowet category though, we also include smart cars, any type of car that can fit into that size. We register as an autowet.
Smart cars, Suzuki's?
Some of the porters.
Porters, Isusus?
Not Isusus, but Suzuki's.
Oh, not Isusus. Porter, Suzuki's, yeah.
Minis.
It's basically the size at this time that defines an autowet.
Oh, Minis, Mini Coopers, okay. Is that a Mini Cooper?
Old Mini Coopers, yeah.
Oh, okay. Minis. Okay. Thank you, Dudley. So would you have some things that we need to, I think, look into? There's some categories here that are just asked, between Edison, the Conservancy, Yachting Company, those are a lot of vehicles, they're probably all legal, but our town is flooded every day with vehicles that have either interior permits or overnight parking, but they're all in the streets every day, so. And it was my understanding as well that commercial vehicles, they don't, that we have, we're full on commercial vehicles. Dudley's given two permits out, it's my understanding, in the last eight years, because nobody is giving up those commercial vehicle permits. I had a few people recently complaining to me that there's a lot of commercial vehicle permits out there that aren't being used. People are just banking, they're sitting on them. It's worth it for them just to sit on them, pay the yearly fee or whatever the monthly fee is, and just sit on them because they know that they're worth their weight in gold, so.
These are all things that I certainly hope to discuss as part of the transportation study.
Yeah.
Which isn't really what we're here to talk about tonight, but those are really the points that we want to get to, and there's, you know, hundreds more that I think are really valuable.
What do we need to study here tonight? What do we need to converse here tonight? Or should we just go to a vote?
Well, I'd like to comment before we go to a vote.
Yeah. No, no, I'm saying that you're sparking so much interest in what we need to talk about as far as the transportation study. I think the only worry is whether, my concern in this would just be, while we are starting the conversations of transportation, I don't want to see 300 new vehicles that people are concerned during the process of the transportation studies, we're going to say no more. So now all of a sudden, we've got 300 more vehicles.
I don't know how we're going to get more vehicles, though. Really, I'm not sure how all these vehicles are going to show up, because you have to be a permanent resident. You have to be here for seven months. You can't just show up and say, "I want a vehicle anymore."
There's a lot of people that live here that do not have a golf cart, and if we start talking about limiting golf carts or controlling golf carts, they're going to use that as impetus to go out there and get a golf cart so that the city can't take it away from it. I mean, the same thing happened in mid-'70s when they said, "We're going to control cars."
I remember.
And we went from 800 to 1,100 in one fell swoop.
Yeah.
In 45 days, we went up to 300.
There was a lot more gray area back then.
Well, we were just talking about controlling cars, because golf carts weren't an issue because they were all electric in those days, and the batteries were very marginal, and golf carts didn't really come into their own until the Yamaha showed up and the Easy Goes, because then all of a sudden, now we have something that can take, go up and down the hills, and they don't have to worry about the batteries.
Okay. Yeah, Denise, or it might be for Scott, on this notification to the public, I thought we had to give a 72-hour notification.
Not for a special meeting.
Not for a special meeting?
24 hours.
It's been 24 hours? Okay. And the reason I'm asking about that is transparency and all that stuff that we, most of us all ran on, or like to have going on. I would, in my opinion, I would like to get a lot more input from the city, from people in the city. I think 24-hour notice is not adequate, in my opinion, and the timing for this, I would like to get a lot more input from people within the city about some of this stuff, about some of these autowets and ordinance for this thing. I would love to see more input from them, because frankly, I just, that's just one little tidbit that I have about it. I would like, definitely like to see more input from anybody in the city. I think 24-hour notice is short. I don't think it's fair. I think we need more input from people out there. That's just what I, my observation right now.
And ditto to that, yeah. The urgent, I will tell you, the urgency ordinance, I'm definitely not in favor of, because any attempt to adopt an ordinance which has, which impacts the entire community so seriously, I don't think we can say, just because we tried, when it tries to close the gate, we don't want to hear from you. And I think that would, and again, all in light of transparency, it would be, so anyway, I'm not in favor of the urgency ordinance at all. And on the second ordinance, I'm in concurrence with Joe, that I have trust in our process that when someone comes to apply, we have a process for all of those. And I don't think the floodgates will open. Yes, do I have a feeling, do I have a, am I concerned about the people that do things illegally? Yes. However, that is an enforcement issue, just like the CUPs are an enforcement issue. And until we, that's, so I, Cindy has always been about a transportation study. I defend that, you know, I really, we all want to see that. And I don't believe doing this will also make staff get off the dime. That is one of our priorities, and I think, because I don't think 30, 60, or 90 days is even going to be plenty enough time to do a study. With everything else we have on our plates right now, and the limited staff we have, unless we're going, you know, I don't know, so I truly am not in favor of either of the ordinances tonight.
Well, as one of the past mayors used to say, "I can count to three." Do we want to continue any further? Do you want to do a vote? It seems like there's three, I'm not doing any action this evening. Do you want to make a motion only and see if we have something, or do you agree?
The snake wants to have a little input.
Oh, yes.
Absolutely.
You need to stand up to the mic? You have to do that. It's the law. It's called martial law.
Absolutely. Martial plan.
Good afternoon. Mike King, 107 Vito Lou, and proprietor of Catalina Yamaha. John Rigolotto normally handles this kind of stuff, but he happens to be on vacation, and, well, all of a sudden, emergency meetings called on his vacation. So henceforth, he is very insightful on what you're talking about tonight. I've just been around since, in business since 1983, so I've kind of seen this before. The last time we had a moratorium, they didn't have an autowet. They had golf carts. That's what this was originally made, golf carts. Easy parking, small parking spaces. Did anybody do the research on when the last time we had a moratorium? Do you know how long ago it was? It's been a lot of time up here, a lot of people getting paid a lot of money.
Nobody here gets paid a lot of money.
Get this smile off your face, man. What the hell? We talked before.
I know. I'm looking for it. It's still in the books, actually.
And want me to save some time, it's back in the early '80s, late '80s.
'88.
'88.
'88? Good job.
February 14th. It was Valentine's Day. Valentine's Day, 1988.
Absolutely. You got it. I was there.
I was there to buy a cart from them.
And they put a moratorium on it. Previously to that, they had a moratorium also, I can't remember when, but it didn't really, they didn't really know why. They didn't know why they, "Let's have a moratorium." Well, why? Well, they had a study, actually before that, that we don't really have a congestion problem, we have a parking issue. So they say. Don't necessarily agree with, but that's what they say. So when the moratorium in '88 went in, they said, "Hey, well, we got to make a solution." And as what they did is they went with one per residence. And do the quick math, '88, '98, 2008, so that's been 26 years, I think, right? 26 years?
Yes.
So things have been going pretty good for 26 years, one per resident. How can you get more cars than that? I don't, it's simple math. So since then, you've opened up, somebody comes in and says, "Well, golf carts are cool, but I got this car I want to bring in." Change the rules. Here comes the little Kia trucks. You get 100 of those come in town. Now they're broken down all over the place, you can't get them fixed. Next comes the next car. Somebody wants to bring in their car, you change the rules, you make it bigger, you make it longer, and all of a sudden, five years later, they're out of business, and you got all those broken down. Here comes the smart car. The city's advertising the smart car. I mean, it bothers me a little bit, but whatever. I mean, you know, I mean, been here long enough, I don't think it's going to kill my business. Five years, they're not going to make the smart car anymore, and they're going to be broken down all over the place, just like everything else, so time goes on. Been 26 years since the last moratorium. The only thing that I would ask for, if a moratorium does want to affect that, the city council made precedence last time that they allowed us to sell the stock we had committed for. I just got all my 2015s in. I've got commitments to customers and to Yamaha to keep my business rolling. So, you know, we could prepare for the future, but just to sit there and say, "Hey, I think we have a vehicle problem, and let's put a moratorium on it without any real study in our good common sense." Just, you know, you've got everybody coming in for the sound abatement, and we're starting to get some sales because they don't want their old beat-up cars anymore. We're taking them. And now you want to sit there and say, "Well, let's not let them have cars either." I mean, it's just, it just keeps piling up, so. You know, those are hard things you got to look out for the people of the town. That's for the people. So to limit more than one per residence, I don't really see where you're trying to go. If you've got an idea, then put it out there. Any questions? I'd be more than happy to, you know, anybody wants any history questions, or be more than happy to answer.
Thank you very much for your input. It was also amusing at the same time, as well as insightful, so thank you.
Was it one per resident or one per dwelling unit?
One per dwelling.
One per dwelling unit. Okay. It was my understanding.
Yeah, it's not one per residence, it's one per dwelling.
It's per dwelling.
Yeah. He's a resident.
Is it residence or dwelling unit?
Dwelling unit, autowets or dwelling units? One per dwelling unit.
Dwelling unit.
Yes.
And what is the?
Definition of a dwelling unit is a kitchen, bathroom, and bedroom.
No, sleeping area.
A habitable.
It's on the tax bill.
I believe it's on the tax bill.
Right.
That's not, that's not, it is, the definition of an dwelling unit for purposes of the vehicle code is not tied to the payment of taxes.
Kitchen, bathroom, bedroom, or?
Yeah, I wouldn't say if it's on the property tax.
I think they call it a habitable unit, right? Where they have kitchen facility, bathroom, all that, so.
How do we?
I'm sorry.
How do we verify the habitability?
Yeah.
That was your question.
Well, my question was, is, I believe you have to prove that that is a legal residence.
Correct.
So there are a lot of golf carts that are parked off-street because it's not a legal residence, and so, you know, they'll park them someplace where, you know, they may not have city stickers or whatnot, but you do somehow have to prove that it is a legal
Well, is there a motion? Being there's no motion, they die for, they die. Kind of like our water one did. All right?
We could theoretically bring this back at a regular council meeting, notice council meeting. Would that give them enough transparency for you?
Well, I think that, but I also think the main, one of the things that you said in main is giving the staff the direction to tell them, "We're serious about getting this study done, and let's get the study done." And then...
But that's part, part of the study is us having in our study session to say, "These are what concerns us as individual council members," before you get the staff out of the role on it, because the staff doesn't know what we, doesn't have an understanding of what we think a traffic study is, because I mean, it's...
Oh, I see. Yes, so we can lay, yes.
I mean, all of us have individual little concerns about stuff in Avalon.
And what it should intend.
Yeah.
Yes, yes.
Which I still don't, I still don't think changes are needed for their ordinance, because I think on the street, there's going to be a few golf carts getting sold soon. And Mike, your ones you have, the replacement ones, that's okay. Even if the moratorium passed, you can, if you have a golf cart, you want to swap it for a new one, you can do that. So those commitments you have to people that have are, it's fine.
Yeah. I think the only issue comes in is where, that makes their training golf cart work better.
If it failed the noise ordinances.
Well, I think you have good credit on cars that fail those ordinances. I mean, the vehicle's good, just because it's not making standard doesn't mean we can't make it work.
Okay.
I like to give you good training. I mean, that's, you've got money invested in your vehicle, we'd like to give you that.
Okay.
You know, I'd like to make a note of that, and this would be interesting for Dudley. What will happen now, I mean, let's keep track of this from this point on. You know how many golf carts we have registered, right, Dudley? Let's see if there is a flood. I mean, I'd like to see that, but at the same time, I think we do definitely need a study just to see where we're at, to see if anybody has found where the gray area's at that we didn't discuss or we cannot, we can't keep an eye on and monitor. So, yeah, we'll definitely see what happens from this point.
It would be interesting to note that if you go back to 1988 and take 1988 figures, when we had 800 blue stickers, how many blue stickers do we have now? It's down to around 400. That's due to the Paul Puma two-for-one plan, so now you're restricting the locals that live here that have been waiting 28 years to get a car permit because you're taking two-for-one. So what happens? You've taken, yeah, they went from 300 to 800.
No, 800 to 1,100.
Well, they stopped at 800. How did it go to 1,100?
Because they, it was 45 days from the time they passed the ordinance till it was effective, and so 300 cars just came over here in that 45-day period. They were here, they got stickers. period, they were here, they got stickered, and then they wouldn't re, add any ones until they got down to eight hundred, and then they did the two-for-one deal.
What year was that?
Seventy...
Something.
Seventy...
Four.
Four, five, six, something like that.
Oh, you're talking about the original ordinance in nineteen seventy-three?
Yeah. That's when the original, when the original ordinance passed.
You better look at your numbers again.
Um, I think you can look at an Islander that shows that.
Or the Bay News.
No, the Bay News wasn't here then.
But I am interested in, very, if you're gonna do a study, eighty-eight's a great place to go, because that's like, when we had problems then, too, and, um, you know, since then, you've added commercial autowet, autowet this, autowet that, nine different categories of autowet, commercial, do you, do you understand why there's so many different categories?
Loopholes.
That would be part of your poll, isn't it? Why do we have so many? I mean, it's pretty obvious, common sense, but I think you ought to pay somebody, go take a, um, a study and see if anything's changed since nineteen eighty-eight.
There's more units in town.
More what?
There's more units in town.
More building?
Dwelling, dwelling units.
Dwelling units, oh, don't forget to put that into the factor, uh, into the equation, and make sure your study person realizes that, too.
Part, part of things, everything that gets built now has off, is required to have off-street parking, but there's no requirement that the person that builds something use the off-street parking.
Well, that's just a law, that's just a rule we're gonna do.
It's a condition of the...
Enforcement, right?
We, we gotta, we gotta adopt that rule and enforce it, because that, that's one of the, that's one of the gray areas, it's, people are slipping through, I mean, every street has that problem, you have a, a unit with parking spots, and everybody's parking out in the street, and then somebody else is parking in their spot.
So you're really losing, so you're losing two spots, right?
As far as I can remember, there was a couple items, um, new construction or complete remodel constructions, that the planning commission, we did, um, put a condition of approval that they had to park in their off-street parking spots, and that the stickers reflected that, so, that has already been underway in the planning commission process, but it was with all new construction or remodel, it wasn't, which would, I think it was fifty percent or more change, that that was required, but you can't go back and require that for the priors.
You're saying there was a sticker that said, that on there?
No, it's, uh, I don't remember what the, however it was, it's not a commercial sticker, and, and, do you remember, Scott, what that was?
I just remember it was a condition of approval.
I remember these conditions of approval.
It's still the same stickers, we give cart stickers.
I thought there was a different sticker, but Dudley's shaking his head.
I don't think so, I think it's just one sticker, right Dudley, one residential, one commercial?
Just have a different one.
I've never been a fan of that.
If I was at that meeting, it was a planning commission one, I think it was for the Blousers up on the top of Metropole, and it was conditioned that way, but we were never directed to give them a non-resident sticker.
Okay, so there is...
They do have non-resident stickers, the Blousers do, yeah, they actually have non-resident stickers, but I believe that was the property you're talking about.
Okay, yeah, I just remember having this conversation, and as a planning commissioner, wanting to require all new construction or fifty percent remodel or more, that they actually had to use their off-street parking, they couldn't use it as a garage or storage or...
Right, those, those folks, fortunately, in this situation, are not full-time residents, so they automatically got the off-street parking. But their renters have on-street parking, I think it's triplex, maybe?
Couple units.
Oh, right, yeah.
Mayor, may I just make one more comment? On behalf of, of what this, this particular item on the agenda was, I believe it was meant to do was address the needs of people that are pedestrian-friendly, bikers, pedestrians. This town is a pedestrian-friendly, and, and we'd like to keep it a pedestrian-friendly community, and I'd just like to say, even though this wasn't voted upon at this point, we're still going to look into the fact that we have some issues with, with traffic in this town, that we have, and, 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 not just traffic and noise and, um, exhaust, but, we will address that when we, um, look into this, and that's what this is all about, so, if you're for this, just understand that what we voted on tonight was not to ignore what your needs are, but it's just so we can do a more in-depth study, and that we have a better idea of what our situation is with our traffic, and then we can get a better idea, uh, idea of what we need to do for our pedestrians as well, and that's a big thing, we want our pedestrians, uh, our pedestrian-friendly community to be happy, as well as the people that need a vehicle to get around, and need as, uh, um, in the trade-off of want are two different things, I understand that, probably one-tenth of us that actually have vehicles and actually need them, but all the same, that's your right to have a vehicle, and, um, so pedestrians, um, hang in there, we're gonna address your needs as well.
Okay, so, back to, we're kind of, we're directing staff, that we want to continue with this, move ahead with the study, but we want to discuss it at the next council meeting, and, and that's where we want to put our input, and what we think we, the areas to be looked into, or what?
The only thing I would just say about the next council meeting, just to give you a warning.
Or at least...
We have leases on the next council meeting.
And a CUP appeal, and two new ordinances we are introducing, but I could recommend, if you would like to have it on that same day, we do a study session like we did the CUPs, maybe two hours prior to it, you have to, and then have an hour break, and then go to the next council meeting, or we have it on a separate day and a separate night, with a lot of notice.
Well, also, in that discussion, is there a way to direct staff to get samples, for lack of a better word, of what a transportation study is, so that we know key words that we may, you know, because there may be things we're not gonna think of, like curb cuts is one of the things comes to mind, that probably wouldn't you think of in a transportation study, that's a way to get my golf cart off the street, so if, if, if someone, whoever does that within the city could maybe look at, what are the areas, and then we can go, "Oh, yeah," but, you know, so the process maybe won't take quite as long, if we have some direction, unless anybody hears every other traffic study.
Well, the traffic studies are done often for, for big projects, but I think what you're looking at is, is not really, it's a traffic study and vehicle study, parking study, a system-wide, a city-wide analysis of your vehicle and transportation parking needs.
Very well said.
Those are some sweet old words.
Does staff feel like they have direction?
Yes, ma'am.
You have a comment, Cindy? Else one?
No, thank you.
Scott, Denise?
Nope.
Meeting's adjourned.